Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand, please. Motion carries unanimously. And we come to that part of the agenda, and I will ask those council members who wish to speak to do so, and I'll start with you, Mr. Edwards.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to first thank Jim Goncalo and his entire staff at Department Heads. They've been very professional over the past two years, and every time I've had an issue with a constituent or any issue in the town, they've been immensely helpful in getting things resolved, and I really appreciated that. Two things out of the two years really stand out in my mind as far as the Department Heads. First was the live fire exercise that Councilor Carroll, Aruda, and myself got to partake in. Hopefully someday the Fire Department will think about having a freshman representative come up and join them again, because that was really an exciting moment. And also I'd like to note that the onion sandwiches we all got to partake in on a, it was a Friday afternoon with senior tea at the Senior Center was most memorable, and I also hope to be invited back for those. Nancy and her staff have also been immensely helpful the last two years. I've been able to come and get backup, any kind of background on an issue, especially having only been on the council for two years. I don't have the entire history of the town at my fingertips, and Nancy's always been very, very good about that, as has her staff. And I really enjoyed coming up here every Friday afternoon to pick up my packet and always see all the smiling faces in the Clerk's office. I'd like to thank my fellow councilors, especially the four of my friends who are going to carry on and continue their tenure with the town. Joanne, I'm going to immensely miss our little sidebar conversations. And Louise, I hope you get to have your chickens before I have my bees. Throughout the two years, even though there have been some disagreements on the council, some of them very heated, the council has always been very civil, even in executive session, and a little less vituperative than I would have thought. Brian and Paul, both of you and your families, the town owes a great debt of service to. You guys have given your time, your Monday nights, your numerous Monday nights, and the town, I don't know, people cannot really appreciate it unless they have also served. And as someone who has served with you, I just want to say thank you from the town for your service and your time. Your families are going to, I'm sure, going to enjoy seeing you on Monday nights now. I'd like to thank the voters, the town, for having given me this unique opportunity to serve and to really get to know my town, our town, uniquely and very intimately. It's been a pleasure to serve. And especially I'd like to thank my wife, Donna. If it wasn't for our family, and our wives especially, or our partners, we wouldn't have the ability to serve. They are left at home with the homework and the dirty dishes and going to band concerts, which sometimes are probably a lot more enjoyable than these town council meetings. We get to go out, and they get to stay home and keep the home fires burning. And guess what? I'll be home on Monday nights from now on, but I'll be out on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. I'm very excited about the challenge I'm about to undertake as a representative in your General Assembly, and I'm really looking forward to it. I've kind of questioned the thought process once in a while. I say, I think about whether I'm jumping from the frying pan right into the fire with the way the state is going right now, but I'm still very, very excited about it and looking forward to it. And if the new council has any need to the state, and they have the bridge issues or any state mandates needing to have looked at or local aid, I have Senator Philag's home phone number, and I'd be glad to show it. Thank you.
Thanks, Louis. There are a lot of people I want to thank, although if I don't mention you by name, I hope nobody's offended. But first of all, I want to start with my family. As Jay was saying, you can't appreciate the time commitment to doing this and to doing it the way you want to do it until you're actually sitting here. And my wife, Cory, my daughter, Teresa, my son, Casey, I have to mention them for their patience, for their understanding, and because I'll be in a lot of trouble when I get home tonight if I don't mention them, because they're sitting back there. I also want to thank the councilors. As Jay said, you don't know what to expect, and it's been very pleasing that over the last four years, we've had a lot of heated discussions, a lot of heated disagreements, but it never becomes personal, and never something that gets in the way of town business, and that's been a very satisfying thing over the last four years. So I want to thank all the councilors here and the ones I've served with on the previous council for their hard work and for their dedication to the town. I want to thank all the volunteers, staff, the other elected officials, and there's too many to name, but you don't realize how many people it takes to keep a town running, keep a town government running, how many people just on their own time, even when their elected officials or paid people are putting in extra hours. There's a lot of hard work that goes into it, and they don't always get the pat on the back, so I just want to mention them and thank them for their dedication as well. As Jay said, the people of Tiverton, it's been an honor for the last four years to represent you. I appreciate the opportunity to do so. I want to congratulate and wish the new council luck. There's obviously a lot of challenges the town's going to be facing, and it's something that I think everybody has a role to serve in town government, whether you're in office or not in office. And going forward, I think it's going to be very important that that spirit continue, that even though there are things that we disagree on, there are going to be disagreements going forward, that the most important thing is that we're one town, we're all neighbors, and we have far more in common than we do have these differences. And I think we need to keep the focus on that going forward, and I'm very confident that we'll be in good shape going forward. So I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much. First, I'd like to thank this current council for having the pleasure of serving with you people. I've had the opportunity to serve on this council for 10 years, and I've served with many different councilors over the years, and it's always been a pleasure with all the council members that I've served with. And you people, I'd probably say, were the best. You know, we looked at things differently, and everyone had different opinions, and I can honestly say that it was a pleasure serving with you. I'd like to say that it was a pleasure serving, working with you, Jim, the Department Heads, the boards and commissions, all the town employees. You know, it's one thing when we sit here, we get so many issues before us, we never, ever, ever take the time out to thank the people, the employees, the boards and commissions, and if it wasn't for them, this town would not work. And I think, you know, we really need to do that, and as the new council members come on, you know, I wish you people would really take that to heart and think about that. We, you know, really thank the employees, the volunteers and the boards, you know, that we just really don't do that enough. I'd like to thank the citizens of Tiverton for giving me 10 years to serve here. It's been a pleasure, it really has, and I'd like to thank my supporters over those years also. If it wasn't for people telling me to keep going, I probably would have never done it. And I'd like to thank you. I'd like to say congratulations to the three new people that are coming on, the three new council members. I wish you the very best. I would suggest to you that you buy some plastic tubs to stop putting some papers in, because, boy, you're going to have a lot of them. You know, I'll be shredding a lot, but you'll be getting a lot. And last but not least, I'd like to thank my wife, Lisa. Lisa, if it wasn't for Lisa for allowing me to do this, I would have never done it in the first place. My children were four and six years old when I started; they are now 18 and 16, so I've been here for a long time. And Lisa, thank you, because I wouldn't have never done it. Thank you so much, and I wish all of you the very best.
And now it's my turn, I guess, and since I'm staying on in a different role, I do want to thank the outgoing council members. And Jay, you are absolutely right. You have no idea how many hours we have spent together, whether it's hearings or litigation or executive sessions, where we would like those to become public, but we can't, because much of them will disclose to those people who do not have the town's interest in what our strategy might be. But I have always felt that with all of you, that we have had a lot of disagreements. Four to three votes, five to two votes, it matters not, but we have always been able to come back together and deal with the issues at hand, and that is very important in a town where we are so dependent upon the good faith and goodwill of each other. Jay, I certainly wish you well as you move on to the General Assembly, and we will call upon your services, I am certain. And Brian, I know that at some point you will be coming back to the town. Casey may have gained a new father on his Little League team, but your services to the town have been, in many ways, focused, responsible, and it's been a pleasure to get to know you. It has been great. And Paul has been my steady left hand. He's usually told me, yeah, do this, Louis, do that, please, and sometimes it would drive me a little crazy, but...
Try to keep you in line, you know?
But I know it has made the meetings move along, and Paul, you too. I expect that you will return one of these years. Hello, Lisa.
Monday Night Football, remember that, Lisa.
So I wish really the three of you, and I want to thank you for the consideration that you have given all of us, and me in particular.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And James, your turn.
Well, I get to see it from a little different side. I've had the opportunity to work with this council for several months, and they are really a great council. Very hardworking, very dedicated, have spent countless hours dealing with the issues of the town, and I really hate to see them go. But everybody has to move on, and they've been very supportive, and they were just great. And as a result, I'd just like to give the outgoing members a token of our appreciation.
Thanks, Jim.
And I just wanted to say, Mr. Hannibal would like to say a few words?
Yes, Madam President. If you don't mind, I'd like to have just one second of audience participation.
Yes.
I'm going to ask the people in the audience to raise their hands if they do not know what the word "vituperative" means. I'm going to ask a member of the town council if they would give us a definition of the word "vituperative." I would ask John Edwards, who's going to the State House, to do that for us. A bit colorful.
And with that, we will call Mr. Senator Philag to the front and to the center.
Being from Warren, I'll keep my words short and sweet, so everyone can understand them. I am honored to participate in the swearing-in ceremony for the Town of Tiverton. Prior to that, I would like to have Representative Loflin come up here, and together we're going to issue citations to each of the departing town council members. Rep. Loflin?
Thank you very much, Senator Philag. You know, just as a kind of a tradition that we do for the departing members, we'd like to pass along these citations that, from the House, these are both from Representative Amaro and myself. This one is for Paul Carroll. Paul, thank you very much. This one is for Brian Medeas.
Thanks, Jim.
This one, oddly enough, is for Representative-elect Edwards, and he's got an airline ticket to Las Vegas. The Speaker asked me to announce the address. That's very good, John.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And personally, I would be remiss if we didn't acknowledge the outstanding contributions the Town of Tiverton has received over the years from Senator June Gibbs and Representative Joseph Amaro, who will not be with us serving in the General Assembly this term. Thirty years ago on this date, in this month in November of 1978, I had the distinct pleasure of being elected to the Warren Town Council, and from that time, I had served on the Warren Town Council for 20 years, 12 years as the town council president. So I know firsthand the responsibility and the dedication and amount of time and effort the council has put into this position. And I'm glad to see that the voters of Tiverton have voted for an experienced town council and also some newly elected officials, which I feel are going to be a good mix for this community. When I think of being an elected official, I think of three statements. One is to listen and be responsive to your constituents. Number two is to thoroughly research your issues and make informed decisions. And number three, probably the most important, is to remember the taxpayer and their ability to pay their taxes. You have been given a tremendous responsibility, and I know you will carry out your task well. Tiverton has a lot of major issues, one being one that I've worked with the last couple of years, the contaminated soil issue with the Inac group in North Tiverton. But also, the community has some other issues of importance, those being sewers in the north end of Tiverton, which I would hope and wish to work with the council in trying to attain some federal funds for those endeavors. And also, they have issues in terms of new libraries, expanded recreational facilities, open space, and providing a education that's first-class to the students of the community. So with that, what I'd like to do is to have Nancy call up the members that are going to be swearing in tonight, so that we can do this all in one endeavor. So Nancy?
Oh, thanks, Tom.
And if the council will just kind of stand and, because you have to be sworn in as well, so that those that are in the front can kind of be seated, you can just kind of stand to the sides. Do we have our town sergeant, Randy Costa? Our town treasurer, which we just certified this evening, Philip P. Lepa. Of course, our town clerk, council members, Edward Rodrick, Jay Lambert, and Cecil Leonard. If there are any school committee or budget committee or anyone in casual, if we've done the swearing-in, you can certainly participate with us if you want. And I was taking my oath from here.
So we're ready, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, your name?
I, your name.
Do solemnly swear?
Sowmely swear.
That I will support and enforce?
That I will support and enforce.
And abide by the Constitution?
And abide by the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States of America?
And the laws of the United States of America.
And the state of Rhode Island?
And the state of Rhode Island.
And that I will?
And I will.
In all respects?
In all respects.
Observe the provisions of the Charter?
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
And the ordinances of the Town of Tiverton?
And the ordinances of the Town of Tiverton.
And will faithfully discharge?
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties?
The duties.
As a member of the?
As a member of the Town Council.
Of the Town of Tiverton.
Of the Town of Tiverton.
So help me God. Congratulations. Do we have certificates?
There are certificates of election here.
Can you please, I think we have certificates.
Certificates of election here, and if you have not signed yet, they are...
No, Nancy is.
The new members, if we saw, I think there's some clerical stuff that has to be...
If you can sit here, I'm going to be...
Do I need to sign this somewhere?
No. You can sit back and do the nomination, I can hear you. Okay, I'm going to begin with a roll call of the newly seated council. That would be Counselor Bowlen.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards. Counselor Edwards. Oh, looking at Jay Edwards. Counselor Rodrick, I'm sorry. Counselor Aruda. Counselor Durfee.
Here.
Counselor Lambert.
Here.
Counselor Leonard.
Here.
And Counselor Costa.
Yeah.
Everyone's...
I don't like my chair, it's going to beat up.
And we'll begin with a nomination for Chair President of Council.
I wish to nominate Mr. Bowlen.
Second.
Second.
Do I have any other nominations? Any other nominations? Then I will cast one vote for Counselor Bowlen as President.
The next order of business will be the election of a vice president.
Mr. President, I should like to place a nomination, the name of a young lady who's done a good job in the council, and it's the youth that the town belongs to anyway, and her name is Joanna Aruda.
Second. We have a nomination as second. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I request the Secretary to cast one ballot, nominate Joanna Aruda for Vice President of Town Council. We'll now have remarks from the newly elected town council members. We'll start with Mr. Lambert.
Thank you. I again want to thank everyone who supported me in the recent election, and I want to assure every resident of Tiverton that I promise to do whatever I believe is in the best interest of this town, whether you voted for me or not, whether you supported me or not. If the economic predictions are correct, we all know that the next two years are going to be difficult for this town and the state of Rhode Island. The state's enormous budget shortfall probably means less state revenues for cities and towns, which means we're going to have to make some very hard decisions here in this town. Just this afternoon, listening to the news on Channel 6, there was an interview with Frank Caprio, our general treasurer, and I believe I took the quote down correctly, and it's very timely, quote, "If I were on a town council, I would look carefully at what can be cut. The state legislature is telegraphing you a message," unquote. And hopefully, everybody in Tiverton is listening. I don't have all of the answers, and I don't pretend that I'll have all of the answers. In fact, at this point, I really don't know most of the questions. But as I see it, we're all in this together, and we'll all have to work together. I will simply be representing your interests at this point and welcome everybody's input into every single issue. Thank you.
Councilman Rodrick?
I'd like to thank the people of Tiverton for voting for me. It's a great honor, but the first thing I'd like to do is to thank the outgoing council members. They've had a great task, and what they have done has been greatly appreciated by the people in the Town of Tiverton, and I think they all deserve another round of applause. I want to thank my family, especially my wife Nancy, who told me when I went on this quest to get on the town council, that I could do whatever I wanted, as long as I didn't cut into her Patriots' time. And unfortunately, in the beginning, they weren't that good, but now they're getting better, so now I really have a task to bear with her. But, and my sons who are here, my mother-in-law, Lois, my grandson, my daughter-in-law. But again, we all know that there are tough times ahead, and as a town, we all must work together. There can no longer be this side of town or that side of town. This is the Town of Tiverton, and we must all work very hard and diligently to do what is best for the town. As Jay has said, tough times are coming, but I firmly believe that if we all work together, we're going to get over this and continue to make Tiverton the best place to live. Thank you.
Councilman Leonard?
I too would like to thank everyone that supported me in the recent election. I would like to thank the entire previous council, having had some experience as to the work they've put in. I think they are to be congratulated for their diligence and efforts. I have some feel for how many hours they spend, and it's, sometimes, it's rather thankless, so I think that they deserve all of our thanks. Clearly, we're going to have some challenges in front of us as a new council. I'm pretty sure those challenges are not going to be solved in just two years, but I trust that this group will make a start towards addressing those issues. And I think that it's going to take the hard work of everybody, and I don't know that it's going to be easy. In fact, I'm relatively sure it's not. So again, I want to thank everybody, and we will do our best to serve the interest of the entire town of Tiverton. Thank you.
I know it's not on our agenda, but I am going to open it up for remarks from the current council, if they wish to make any. Hannibal?
I would like to echo the remarks of those who went out and those who are coming in with regards to thanking. I really want to thank everybody in town for the support I've received in the past in the three capacities that I've held while I've been in town, and to my family as well for their listening to me when I haven't been feeling so well, mentally that is. But in any case, I thank you all very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Well, first I must say with my remarks, I would have to gratefully thank my husband, Jim, for all the patience that he's had in my absence from my house. I still have to do the dishes before I come to the town. There is no pass on that in my house. But anyway, and I'd like to thank the people of Tiverton who still believe in me and that I try and do the best that I can with the information that I have, and I will continue to do and serve to my best capacity. Thank you.
I too wish to thank all the members of the council who just left, those just joining us. It is going to be a tough two years. It's my turn to wear the target, sitting in this chair. Whatever happens, it becomes a responsibility of the council president. I will take that responsibility. I hope I can live up to the expectations that the voters of this town have showed in me, and I will continue to try to serve as well as I have for the past 13 years. Thank you. Wally, thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule to come here and swear in our town officials. And John, thank you for being here also with those citations for the outgoing members. Okay, moving on with our agenda, we have the approval of the Consent Agenda. In the past, it has been my responsibility to read it, so one more time, I will read it. The Consent Agenda tonight consists of the receipts of the minutes from the following boards and commissions. Cemetery Commission II, Economic Development Commission, Historical Cemetery Commission, Library Board of Trustees, Open Space Commission, Personnel Board, Prevention Coalition II, Recycling Committee, Waste Water Management II, Landfill Joint Subcommittee and Recycling, and the Planning Board IV. Correspondents receive from National Grid expressing thanks to community for assistance during recent national gas outage. Natural... during recent national gas outage, natural gas outage. Resolution received from the town of Middletown regarding ride transportation co-share directive. Receipt of Newport County Convention and Visitors Bureau order to report available in Town Clerk's office. Taxes, sense request approval of tax abatements A and B, and request distributed for appointment at next council meeting, the Juvenile Hearing Board, Historic Preservation Advisory Board, Housing Authority, and Library Board of Trustees. You've heard tonight's consent agenda, are there any requests for removal? Seeing none, entertain a motion to...
I will so move the consent agenda be approved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. No questions, all those in favor? Motion carries unanimous. Public hearings advertised, proposed amendment of an ordinance to amend Chapter 22 to formalize and elaborate on existing practices for entertainment and business entertainments and/or for money-making purposes. I'll entertain a motion for a continuance of the public hearing to December 8.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Pass to unanimous. Proposed annual review and amendment of various fees, fines, and permit costs as authorized by ordinance and previously set forth in code. Continuance of public hearing to December 8. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor? Board of Licensing Commission is public hearing advertised. Show cause hearing for Spar Island Enterprises Doing Businesses Little Bear Lounge requested by Rhode Island State Fire Marshal's Office, Tiverton Fire Code, and Tiverton Code Enforcement for liquor license, vicualling, and tobacco licenses continued from November 10 meeting.
Good evening, Mr. President, new council. Congratulations. I know that Councilor Littwin is here. Sir, with your permission, I'd like to pass out a copy of current progress report that was conducted this afternoon at 3:00 at Little Bear Lounge. Mr. President, the last time I had handed you that I had the violations were outstanding, there was, their status was in red. This time, those items that are completed are in black. Those that are still outstanding with no progress done on them are in red. Again, we had 34 violations that were situated with the Little Bear Lounge. The sprinkler plans have been submitted, they have been approved. However, as you go through that, you'll see that there are some other items which are somewhat disturbing that could be done at no cost other than a couple of man-hours to label to do, and still have not been done in the past several weeks. Again, this is the same ongoing problem. We tend to be, Mr. Kelly seems to be focusing strictly on the sprinkler issue, but there are other items that could easily be taken care of and clear up a lot of these problems ahead of time. Again, it's still becoming extremely frustrating trying to bring them into compliance.
I did speak with my client this afternoon, it's my understanding that there's an electrician in the building today, although it seems to be different than what the chief is saying. Who is working on these?
Could you please speak a little closer to the mic?
Sure. Who is supposed to be working on the items on the chief's list? And it's my understanding as regards to sprinkler plans, that there was an email from the town just this past Friday regarding an additional revision that Mr. Murphy wanted made to the plans as regards the creation of three zones, and that's being worked on at the present time.
I agree with that, council. Those are moving forward in concept. The plans have been approved and accepted, there are just two other items, one is a connection for the fire department, the other is a zoning issue, to be able to address where the sprinkler is tripped from. But again, those are, those are moving forward, but the other items, as you can see, are ones that are...
Chief, when I look at this and I see in that red column you're speaking of variances applied for pending, and then no progress in last inspection. If I applied for variance, why would I be working on that issue? I'm asking you the question because it sounds like if, I'm not doing that because I'm waiting to see what the outcome of the variance is.
The variances have been, some of those variances were put forward on time. The concern is that we had discussed, major issue is the back door, which swings in and also has a deadbolt lock on it. It needs to be changed, they're still moving forward, we're waiting to hear on that, but those need to be taken care of.
It's my understanding, and again, chief, correct me if I'm wrong, the issues which are variances are handled by the state.
They are handled by the state, but my...
We're sort of beholden to the state. When they get about holding a state fire marshal hearing, we go in and present a situation to them, and then they determine whether they want to grant the variance or not. So the issues that do say variance would be addressed with the state, and there's really no ability to do work on those until the state fire marshal makes a ruling, which is not uncommon with an older building.
I would disagree with that, Mr. President. In the meantime, what these variances have asked for, is asked for time to be able to comply with that. They will still have to be complied with, they are not going away. The only one that would go away would be the headroom issue on the second floor, we cannot structurally have them change the building. But my task, presented to me by the council, was to give you an update of where they are. Today at 3:00, I walked through with this list in hand, item by item, and that's where they were at 3:00 this afternoon.
You know, there are some things on this list that, in your description, which is lack of floor proximity, extension cords are still being used as permanent wiring. Electric panels are not labeled, not done. Those are things that really could be attended to.
Absolutely.
Those are not big money items.
Absolutely.
I spoke with Ms. White today, and it's my understanding that those are being addressed, I think as we speak, I don't know if it was after the chief left, I spoke with Nancy at about 4:30 or so this afternoon before I came down here.
We've been continuing this hearing for at least four, six weeks now, and these are very minor things that could have been taken care of, and they're still, this is November the 24th, and these things that are very minor, and which we talked about for several weeks now, are still not done. I have to ask, why? These are very minor things. Extension cords, why? Lighting, why?
I think just because there have been other issues that needed to be addressed with the sprinkler system and the other wirings that needed to be done and so forth.
You know, these are the more simple issues, and as Mrs. Aruda said, we've been here at least six weeks dealing with this. Chief, I'd like to ask you, what is your recommendation with regard to these matters?
I'd like to see the license pulled. I'd like to see the license pulled until completion. My concern is that there are extension cords. This afternoon, there are more emergency lightings that are inoperable, the back door which swings in towards the patrons has a deadbolt lock on it. Today, I also photographed where the panic hardware on the north door to the building has been ripped off. I am also extremely concerned, this afternoon I walked in, and in the men's bathroom, someone has been using a lighter to burn the ceiling. They've carved their name with a lighter into the ceiling. To me, it's an extreme fire hazard, and I would also caution that last week, we sat with the state fire marshals in District Court, there was a request for a continuance by Councilor Littwin. That continuance was based upon and thrown back that the Tiverton Town Council is closely monitoring this issue. So I would caution the council, as now the District Court has been made aware, you are monitoring it, so they are going to place you in the hot seat.
Anyone else wish to?
I'd like...
One sec.
Chief, I'd just like to, has anything been scheduled with the Fire Code Safety Board of Appeal for these variances?
I do not have anything, I have, we could ask for an expedited, but there's been no request for an expedited hearing on it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kelly.
First of all, I'd like to apologize to the council for you having to go through this for several weeks. Many of these issues are out of my control. There are some other issues going on with the business that I don't want to go into at this time. I also want to apologize to the chief, because I think he's an honorable man, and he's done a very good job, and the people that work for him have been nothing but professional. There are things that haven't been done that should have been done. Most of them are out of my control. I do not go to that business on a daily basis, and someone else is running it right now, but I am the owner of record, and until that changes, I'm the person responsible for it. And I understand that, and I understand the position that this council has been put in, and I am probably the most embarrassed person in this room to have to be in this situation. And whatever you people do, you've done it with dignity and honor, and there would be no hard feelings about anything that takes place as a result of this situation.
I would like to make a motion that the license be revoked or suspended until we have confirmation from the fire chief that you are satisfied that this establishment is safe from a fire standpoint.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion on the floor to suspend the license until we get a report from the fire department, you know, stating that they feel that this establishment is sufficiently up to code, you know, to meet the safety needs of the citizens of the town of Tiverton. Any further discussion?
Mr. President, I'd like to request an amendment to that motion, and that is to have that information, have the chief provide an information to the town clerk in that we authorize her to restore the license, so that the business isn't closed down any more than it really has to be.
Could I just ask that we just have some specificity as to what would be required? Would it be the items on this list?
I would have to say yes. There's 35 items still on this list, five of which are the most menial to still to be done. There's over 1,000 hours of inspections that's already been conducted at this business, so I have to say at this point in time, after six to eight weeks, that it would have to be. Yes, that would be my...
So the item's on this list, and then my client conferring with the chief, and the chief's satisfied?
I think the chief would have to confirm to the town, however that is, whether it's the clerk or the council, or both, that it's safe from a fire standpoint.
Which would exclude the sprinkler system, which we're handling separately?
May I add, my view is that rather than completing every single item here, I think it's as soon as the chief feels safe enough to make the recommendation to the town clerk.
That was sort of what I meant, Mr. Costa, thank you, I appreciate that.
Mr. Lambert.
No, that's fine, I was gonna second the proposed amendment by Mr...
That the license will be reinstated upon the fire chief informing the clerk of satisfactory compliance with this. Are you gonna insist on all of the issues with the variances that they've applied for? Or you're gonna, my question is, are we gonna work on getting everything else completed except those items that are up to the state looking for a timeframe?
I would go to that point, to go to the state, I would also look to ask the state to expedite it, but those that are of a safety concern, I think we need to expeditiously move that through the Board of Appeal and Review.
We have a motion in a second to suspend the license of Little Bear Lounge. Until such time as the fire department informs the clerk that sufficient progress has been made to cover the violations that have been noted in this report given to us. I believe that's the motion.
Sounds okay.
All those in favor? It's unanimous.
Mr. President, before these people leave, may I suggest that you take up the other licenses, the new licenses, which would also be for this one, Spar Island Enterprises Doing Businesses Little Bear Lounge. I'm assuming you're going to apply similar conditions, but since we have the people here before us now, so that they have the opportunity to speak if they wanted to, that basically you would be not renewing the new one, you'd be suspending the...
Right, let's do the tobacco, the entertainment, is that what you're talking about?
Tobacco, entertainment, and the liquor license renewal, and the vicualling license.
Yep.
Or that would be all in effect starting December 1st, otherwise, that you're not renewing those. Pending the same thing, pending the fire chief's, you'll only renew it pending the fire chief's communication to the clerk.
I believe that in our annual renewal of liquor licenses and licenses, it's subject to meeting all legal requirements, and they have not met the legal requirements based on the motion we just took. And that, basically, to separate that, I think their license will be given back to them when they meet this, and that includes next year's licenses. The suspension carries forward.
I just wanted to make, I just wanted to make sure they understood that, and the council, if they had any, they wanted to speak, that they said this now before they leave the crowded chambers.
Then, okay, then I'll entertain a motion to take item number six out of order.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to take item six, which is the renewal of the liquor licenses, out of order. All those in favor? Okay. Then I'll entertain a motion to award annual renewal of the liquor licenses, with the exception of Little Bear Lounge, or Spar Island Enterprises Doing Businesses Little Bear Lounge, again, until such time as they meet the fire department's requirements.
So moved.
Excuse me, I think we need to take it in the other order, I think you want to take just the motion to renew Little Bears, because you do have to technically open the, allow public hearing if there's anyone else on the others, so if we could just limit it to Little Bear at this time.
Okay. On the annual renewal, entertain a motion not to renew the license until the same stipulations as the current license are under or met.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Chief, if you need any assistance with the expedition with the Fire Code Safety Board of Appeal, please let me know, and I'll help you contact Mr. Coffey, the executive director.
Yes, sir, I will. Thank you.
This time, I'll entertain a motion to renew the liquor licenses, you know, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
You want to take them by category or altogether, Mr.?
You need to...
Do we have to take them by category?
Well, no, but for the liquor license, you need to just ask for, if there's any public comment on any of the liquor licenses.
We're gonna open a public hearing on renewal of liquor licenses.
Excuse me, Mr. President.
Yes.
Regarding the suspension of the license, is that gonna be immediately? When would that take effect, please?
Effective immediately.
I believe there's communication from Mr. Eames about both Spar Island Enterprises and N-I-M-R-A-G-R-A-J-D-B-A Crossroads Liquors.
Say again, please? You want to talk about liquor licenses?
Yes, it's on the, there are four staple pages from Mr. Gareth Eames, and... They're, they were on the chair here, I mean, on the blotter.
This involves tobacco license.
There's four pages there.
No, there's four.
And the third page down involves the liquor license.
I think Ms. Eames is gonna come forward and tell us his concerns anyway, to elaborate on the letter. With respect to Crossroads Liquors?
Crossroad Liquors is presently in the process of gaining inspections for some safety violations that have been noted there. I've had the plumbing mechanical inspector and the electrical inspector, and I know the fire department's been in there also, and we're trying to clear these up before I will sign off on their license.
Would you mind repeating what is wrong with renewing the licenses with these two concerns?
In the case of the Crossroad Liquors...
In the case of the Crossroad Liquors, you know, we have, we have had some violations of electrical code and plumbing mechanical code which have caused a safety hazard. And we've been in and inspected that property and they are in the process of correcting them and when they are corrected, then I will feel that I can sign on the, as to their safety.
Thank you.
The public hearing is still open. Anybody from the public wishing to be heard on this matter? Anyone from the public wishing to be heard on the renewal of liquor licenses? Seeing none, we're gonna close the public input session and turn it to the council. I'd like to see a motion to renew the liquor licenses with the exception of N-I-M-R-A-G Doing Businesses Crossroads Liquor at 1540 Bogomash Road and Spa Island Enterprises, which we already took care of, so...
Don, can I raise a point of order though? With regard to Nani's is on the list as a BVL and we also have Nani's as having a request for a full liquor license.
Yes.
So might I suggest that we, at least in this motion, consider Nani's separately and just approve the rest of them except Nani's, then take up Nani's?
Very good because I have no problem. We have to go back and open a public hearing on their request for a full liquor license.
Yes. I would move that we approve all liquor licenses presented to us with your exceptions and with the exception of Nani's, which we'll consider separately.
And would we confirm that the exception for Crossroads Liquors would be similar to the terminology with Little Bear that upon...
Upon completion, con, meeting all legal requirements, the license would be renewed. It's not being renewed because they haven't met all legal requirements, the code violations.
Thank you.
Have Crossroad Liquors been advised of this situation?
Yes, they have, councilman.
Hey, Mr. President? I have a question. Should we not issue the liquor license for Crossroads Liquor at this time? When would they be notified that they can no longer be open?
That would not be till December 1st because it's only the new license. We don't have them here for any suspension or show cause.
They could have, they could have their license December 1st if they complete, you know, and I'm sure the building official will notify them if he hasn't notified them already.
And they have been making progress, so I don't expect that there will be a holdup.
And that should be subject to the same conditions as the building official okays that they've met all the legal requirements. They're being denied for failure to meet the legal requirements and that's why sometimes if we pass these, we don't have to pull one to do this because they're not gonna be issued the license because we're renewing licenses subject to meeting all legal requirements. If they haven't met the legal requirements because of the code violations, they're not issued the license until they do so. So that's one of the reasons why I think we can approve them and use the same procedure we used and we use that in our recommendation for licenses that is subject to meeting all legal requirements. So we have a motion...
I'll second that motion by Ms. Durfee.
To approve the liquor licenses with the exception of the class, well, we're approving the licenses with the stipulation of meeting the legal requirements on N-I-M-R-A-G and we're taking out Nani's only because we're considering it for a different class of license.
Yes.
So we have a motion to approve that?
I'll second that again.
We have a motion and a second to approve the liquor licenses. All those in favor? Now we'll move on to the request.
Should we do Nani's?
Yeah, we're gonna do Nani's. We'll move on to Nani's Incorporated Doing Businesses Nani's Kitchen and Pasta Shop requesting a full liquor BV license subject to meeting all legal requirements. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone from the public wishing to be heard on this matter?
May I ask the town clerk, has this been advertised for a full liquor license?
Yes. The advertisement's attached. No, it isn't attached. Yes, oh, yes, it is attached to my packet anyway. It has been advertised and there, I believe, 15 licenses right now. The Patriots Club and Past and Present do not have their licenses, so there's an available one.
Okay. Anyone from the public wishing to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, we will close the public portion of this and open it to the council.
I will make a motion that the full liquor license be granted to Nani's Kitchen and Pasta Shop.
I second that.
Subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Absolutely.
So a motion and a second to issue a full liquor BV license to Nani's, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes unanimous. Next, we have the annual renewal of auto junkyard and secondhand dealers licenses, subject
Make a motion to approve, subject to meeting all legal requirements?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the auto junkyard and secondhand dealers licenses, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Sitting as the Board of Licensing Commission is not advertised, the new request for Leo Texera Doing Businesses Leo's Greenhouse requests holiday license, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? These three properties, Doing Businesses Seabreeze Restaurant, request permission to remain open until 2:00 on New Year's Day, subject to meeting council restrictions. I'd like to see this one put off. This is one that I think may need some discussion and I think we need to move along this evening.
I will make a motion that we continue this matter to December 8th.
Second.
Motion to continue till December 8th and seconded. Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor? Annual renewal of licenses, subject to meeting all legal requirements. The list of businesses attached Antique Licenses, Manufactured Home Elderly Community, Planning Board and Buildings Own Official Recommendations, Mobile Home Parks, Petroleum Storage, Street Escavation, Tobacco Dealers, Cigarette Vending Machine Licenses, Vicualling Licenses, Holiday Business Licenses, Route 177 Flea Market License and Entertainment
Mr. President, before we call for a motion or a vote, which is the usual way we handle this, I wonder if the chief of police or the director of the Public Works Department has any comments on those that are appropriate for their responsibilities such as street excavators licenses? Have you had a chance to review the list of those people that are gonna have their licenses renewed?
Yes, I do, council, which did I support them? I do have a comment on B, the Manufactured Home Elderly Community License. I hope you received correspondence from the planning board relative to the timeframe to put in the emergency generators that run the sewer system for the whole community.
We did.
Gareth, do you have any knowledge of where that stands on the generator installations?
I'm sorry?
The Manufactured Home, the Country View Estates.
Oh, I don't, I haven't been dealing with that. I think Steve has.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chairman, that came about when I was reviewing the new Watupa section of that Country View Estates in the planning board and upon review, I was going over the sewer system, which is going to be a new connection to Country View Estates and I noticed that 10 years ago or whatever, that emergency generators were supposed to put up, be put up in two pump stations, Cardinal and Blackbird Place. Without these in place, fortunately, we haven't had a long power outage or that whole community would be not, they wouldn't be able to use their sewer systems or their drains and stuff would be probably overflowing. So I brought it to the planning board's attention and recommended that some action be taken to make sure that that's done as soon as possible.
You know, I was a little, a little unclear on the planning board's letter because they conditioned, as I read their letter, their approval on the installation. Is that your understanding of what occurred?
I think they were asking for the recommendation to approve the license based on that condition. It's a conditional approval that when those are in, that the planning board will support the issuance of the license, so, but they want them in by those dates.
I was at that meeting and I believe I understand it the same way.
When is this license, what is the timeframe on? Is this on December 1st?
I believe so.
Yes, let me go back to my question. Are they saying approve it with conditions? And if those conditions fail, then what?
Then you disapprove, pull the license away from them. If they don't have those, if they don't have those generators in by those specific dates, then they're not supporting the continuing of the license. I mean, this has not only been 10 years or so when it was built, but it's been a year and a half trying to get this situation rectified and nothing was happening, so...
Well, certainly if sewer flows into those houses, this will be a very serious issue.
I think it would be, yes.
Has Country View Estates been notified of this condition?
We've, yes, Jerry Leary was at the planning board meeting. He was representing Country View Estates. He agreed to these dates and that was actually agreed to, I think, sometime back in September, October between Mr. Leary and myself, you know, those, they gave me those dates when they were gonna be in, so they're being held to those dates. Those are the dates they said they would be in by and they're not.
I would make a motion that the current license be extended to December 19th, 2008, and if the work is not done and the town clerk has not notified that it has been done, that the license be allowed to lapse.
Yeah, well, why don't we extend it to our second, well, we probably won't have a second meeting in December.
Yeah, the Christmas meeting is usually canceled.
Yeah. Okay. I was trying to make it so we go to our meeting because they have till December 8th.
18th.
18th. Maybe we should do it to our...
December 2nd. That's what we made.
Yeah, I was gonna say if we did it the first meeting in January, we're gonna have no whether it's, has occurred or hasn't occurred. And if we don't hold that meeting in Christmas week...
That's my point. My point was to extend the license to our first meeting in January.
That's good too, especially since my motion hasn't been seconded. I would make a new motion then to continue the current license until the council's first meeting in January and that it lapses if these conditions have not been met.
Are there any other licenses which need to have stipulations placed on them? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the licenses with the, I'm gonna say with the amendment made by Hannibal concerning Country View. We're extending their license, Country View's license.
I think, I think it was just the clerk saying Mr. Costa made that as a motion to renew that one separately from the other, just as a procedural.
That's to extend the licenses, not to renew. We're extending their current license till the first meeting in January.
And to issue it if the conditions are met.
The new license.
Yeah, the new license.
Which we can act upon. Are you suggesting we just do that separately?
Yes.
Okay. Then I will, I guess Mr. Costa's motion has been seconded.
We have a motion on the license for Country View Estates, which is to extend the license till the first meeting in January and if the stipulations of the planning board of the two generators are met, then their license will continue in force for next year. Am I correct?
Yes.
And we're voting on that separately. Any further discussion?
Mr. President, I would like to recuse myself on that particular issue.
Any other comments? Questions? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimous. Abstention of Mr. Rogers. Accuse them. I'll entertain a motion to approve the rest of the licenses.
I'll make a motion to approve the rest of the licenses as provided that they meet all legal requirements.
Second. Motion made and seconded on a remainder of the licenses. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous.
I'm glad you don't ask us to raise our right hands because my right hand now is dysfunctional. I'm gonna start raising my left.
As long as you raise one, I know what your intention is.
Thank you.
And the new business attorney, Stephen Hare, representing Joseph Bosman Church Community House of Operation, requests scheduled public hearing for street abandonment for December
And that is the request.
For a public hearing.
I will so move.
Do which date you want.
January 12th.
We have a motion to schedule a public hearing for street abandonment for January 12th. Was there a second?
January 12th.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous.
Mr. President, before you go off to new business, you seem to have de facto made a decision to not have the December 22nd meeting. I think if you could add, if we could have a motion to add to the agenda, the scheduling discussion of that December 22nd meeting?
We will do that at our first meeting in December. We're not gonna do, somebody made that suggestion, but I think it's too early. I think we will make that, well, I'm just saying, looking at what the agendas are gonna be because we've had two that were very short because of this, we'll see how that plays out, but I think the discussion of that will be at our next meeting. Councilor, announcements, comments, and questions? This is a request to schedule a workshop for the town council elect officials and all town boards and commissions, your role as a public official for January 5th, 2009.
Yes, Mr. President, we've talked about this for a while. We talked about trying to do it with other communities and we got tied up with other matters of litigation and employees, et cetera. But with several new people elected to several different bodies on the town, I think it's somewhat urgent now that we have this. The intent would be just to have a fairly short, two-hour workshop dealing with things like the open meetings law, the Access to Records Act, the Ethics Commission, just a kind of tutorial for the new people and a refresher for the old people. And I would ask that the council request all those whom it appoints, require all those whom it appoints to attend and request everyone else to attend. And I picked, I just picked the January 5th date with the clerk. We were looking for a date that would be soon but would be open. That's the first Monday after the new year and there's no other meetings that conflicts with it. It doesn't have to be that date.
Does any of the council have a problem with that date of January 5th?
No, but I think it's an excellent idea.
Yes.
Hurrah.
Then, you know, let's do this with, with a motion to have a workshop, your role as a public official on January 5th, 2009.
So moved.
Second?
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Let's say at 7:00 PM?
Yes.
Yes.
All those in favor? Unanimous.
Make a motion, we go into a recess for a reasonable amount of time, Mr. President. If you would set that, I'd appreciate it, for election social.
At this, at this time, my agenda does call for a brief recess for election social. We'll recess for 15 minutes, because we do have a hefty executive session.
Should we take the votes to go into executive session at this time?
Well, I think that, that might be appropriate.
I will make a motion that we go into executive session pursuant to 4246.5, subsection A, subsection 5, with regard to possible acquisition or disposition of town held property.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
And that such executive session continue to discuss litigation under 4246.5A, subsection A, subsection 2.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
And to further remain in executive session to discuss under 4246.5A6, prospective business industrial park.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
And in case we really get tired, then we ought further discuss the collective bargaining agreement under 4246.5A2.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor? We're now in recess.